Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the city council meeting. Today's date is April the 6th, 2020, and it's 3:00 PM. We're meeting in city council chambers, 1120 Houston Street, Laredo, Texas. Today's April the 6th, but of course we're also meeting over the live web link. And it's laredontexas. .swiget.com/live. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence, please. A pledge of allegiance. He was alive for the United States of America. And to the parliament for which we are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence for any particular intention we have and obviously let's keep the intention of this COVID matter that has afflicted the world, including our city as well. Thank you so much. Moving forward, welcome, please.
Eric B. Sacks.
Present. 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 Yeah, the next item is the approval of the minutes, and that's March 2nd, March 14th, March 17th, and March 31st. And that's motion to by Councilmember Torres and seconded by Mr. Curran.
Yes, it's the council member. I'm here. I'm listening to the wall. Um, I understand why we're not getting audio. What's he doing?
You've seen right now the way we
Getting audio at the library.
We need to do WebEx.
Just letting you know.
And so what we're asking every, everyone involved, each one of these individuals also is running
No, this is not, I don't think it's W. I'm getting it.
Our people, our participants that are online as well, obviously are running through WebEx. And so as we process this forward, whenever you need to speak, please, just like we've done in other WebExes, on mute, and then you'll be able to go ahead and speak. The mayor obviously is managing the meeting. Uh, the individuals who need to speak on the community side, uh, please raise your hands, send a text to come in so that you can be recognized as well. But when there is calls or communication, if there is communication coming from
Jerry, you are, you are coming out. Mayor, I see, I got, you got, we got video going, but I don't have audio going. I'm
Anyone here? Uh, just give me a thumbs up, anyone from the outside?
We're having trouble with the audio. We're having trouble with the audio. I didn't hear most roll call. I
Okay, if we can mute. Can you just uh, Councilman Bali, uh, go ahead, mute.
Okay, I didn't hear roll call, so I'm gonna mute now.
Uh, so everyone, if we, again, if we can take just a little bit of time as they switch over WebEx, there's a little bit of delay. So as you come on, give me a couple of seconds and then make sure that you're on to be able to give an affirmative uh, or a comment. So just give me enough room and space.
I've got no audio coming in. I don't know why. I'm getting it. I'm not, I'm not getting it out.
Yes, so for the second of roll call, we, we did the roll call and we do have a call. Yes, thank you, Mr. City Secretary. And moving forward to the minutes. Uh, that's the, the approval of the minutes of March 2nd.
Motion to approve as presented.
Hold on, it's uh, March 2nd, March 14th, March 17th, and March 31st.
You're getting it now, but
So, uh, motion, would you unmute and speak?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second by Dr. Martha Martinez.
Did you unmute?
Yes, sir.
Are you recording this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we do have a motion by Councilmember Torres and seconded by Dr. Martha Martinez to approve the minutes as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Or by raising your hands, please. So by showing hands, and I see majority. The motion, uh, the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to citizens' comments. Mr. City Secretary, do we have any comments? Do we have about thirty? So, uh, just for the public, the city secretary will be reading the comments. Along with Mr. Rafael Benavides. And uh, if there's any questions, depending on the question, we'll address it briefly since we're all limited by time. Go ahead.
Mayor, the first one is from Rosa Maria De Ano. Yes, and anyone hear me?
Yeah, we're here to speak. And it's on item 25, and her comment is, "I strongly oppose the building of a border wall in our city and in our southern border with Mexico. A border wall is an affront to our neighbors and fellow Mexicans, an unnecessary expense at this time of crisis. Plus, it will forever damage the fragile ecosystem. Twenty-four point, twenty-four point four million per mile. A border wall could be better used. We need to look at the immigration laws and reform them. We do not need a border wall, but better laws and a humane and compassionate care for asylum seekers and immigrants." And the next one is from Ms. Patricia Cortez. And she just, um, it's on item 25, and she's against item 25. The next one is for, uh, for Mr. Processe Vios. And it's item 25, and he is against item 25, and his statement is, "Please table item." It's untimely to these COVID-19 impact response reality. We need to dedicate our time and efforts responding to the crisis. Focus on the assisting and emergen- emergency response teams. Those, uh, those who lost loved ones, impacted businesses and employees are supportive of border security, but also care about social, economic, ecological implications. There are stakeholders, private, public, that would like to an opportunity to discuss this project that's recently made public. Uh, thank you for your work during these times, prime time. And then I have, uh, Sylvia Bruni. And it's on item 25. She's against it. "I remain pathetically opposed to any physical barrier separating Laredo from my neighbors to the south. Not only is this act totally out of merit, no national emergency present, but in this time of real pandemic crisis, these funds should be shifted over to where they are truly needed. The medical supplies personal critically needed to fight this virus." Then Mr. Bill Skeen. An item 25. "It is unfortunate that such an important item was placed on the consent agenda without consulting downtown private sector businesses. It would be most impacted by the bulkhead and adjoining wall. With the current situation wherein citizens cannot attend council meetings, the city council should table this item and allow Laredo citizens and business leaders to provide input regarding this important project. Also, so the former, uh, the form of the MOU is ambiguous and establishes a bad precedent um, that may affect the public and private landowners."
Mayor, at this time, may I make a motion?
Counselor? And it's on, uh,
Mayor, may I make a motion to bring up item 25?
Yes, would you hold that, please, Mr. City Secretary? Yes, Councilman Bali, uh, you want to speak?
Uh, yes, mayor, I'd like to make a motion to bring up item 25 and to table item 25.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion uh, to bring up item 25 and to table item 25. And it's been seconded by, uh, Councilmember Mark Martinez. Uh, no discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Well, okay, by, by hand signal, yeah? Show your hands. And I show a majority. So the item is tabled. All those opposed? None indicating, uh, so the motion is, is tabled. Thank you. Thank you.
Back to, uh, public counsel, Mr. Josh Thompson. He just stated item, but he put FY20-039. And it's T and W Tire employees, 22 citizens of Laredo, and have submitted two competitive bids, a solicitation, number FY20-039. I'm not sure, counsel. We'll have that written, but "After speaking with the city of Laredo's purchasing department today while following up with the progress of this bid, I found out that it was on the city council's agenda to go down and dis-solicitation across the board and resubmit. I have to ask a question on behalf of the vendors, including my competition, why this is happening? The answer I was given was" uh, given is only?
Real quick, may I start in trouble? Yes, sir. Can we repeat the number of it so that we can know what item it is?
It's item FY20-039. As it might be fleet, about tires.
I just want to make sure we're on the right page. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, Okay, I have a question on behalf of the vendors, including my competition. Why this is happening? The answer I was given is that only the fleet department reviews the results. Then he follows up with another comment. Section 20.1 says, "Only pre-approved brands are allowed." Section 20.2 specifically lists approved brands. We submitted two approved brands, General and Cooper. They completely aligned with specifications. I picked these brands due to the competitive pricing, but also follow a full warranties that bring more value to the city. Section 4 outlines why bids can be rejected, and none of these applying. Section 10 says that the lowest responsible winner wins the bid. If T and W, or any vendor puts the lowest qualified bid, then we ask it be rewarded tonight. And then he follows up with another part three. So we ask the city council to approve the bid as is. It is a disservice to the bid process and as well to the taxpayers of Laredo if the bid is redone over until preferred results are done. An effort to the vendors that put a lot of resources into doing business with the city. Thank you for hearing my words. I can be reached at
Okay, let me, let me get into this.
I have, uh, what I expect and warranty.
What is it you want me to do on that? I'm here in a separate laptop.
Karina Tabayo for reviewing. Thank you, Joshua Counselor.
Okay.
I have here from Mr. Miguel Contra. The item is 60G. Yes. And he simply said that he's for it. He is for it.
What?
Yeah.
There's a question here by some council members asking, "What is the item made reference to in a
Sixty G?
Sixty, six zero G. Six zero G. Mayor, uh, if the question was on the prior item or the current item, which item are you referring to, council members?
Mayor, wait me.
Yes.
It's sixty G, Joe. I understand you're saying sixty G, but sixty G one, two, or three?
They don't, they don't mention, council members. It's just, they put item sixty G on this particular one, Mr. Benavides. So it
Mayor, can we recognize the deputy city manager? She has some information to relay to us.
Mayor, yeah, call them.
Yes, please go ahead.
It is item number thirty-five. The number she's referencing is the purchasing bid. Basically, it's for tires, and it was rejected because not, none of them met the, the specifications that were being required.
That was the previous items that I read. For the tires, yes.
Right, so that's the clarification again. If we're speaking to the it's the sixty G one. Previous was item thirty-five. And that's, that's a clarification that we'd like to provide to council.
If Mr. Miguel Contra, um, his position is four, and then it says item sixty, six zero G. Not sure which one of the three.
With the record reflection, we now have council member Nelly Gilma with us. Thank you. Welcome, Mayor. Please continue with the comments.
Mayor, do you recognize, also, press
Um, and this item is, um, is four, and it's item for tax abatement for businesses, councilman Doris item. It says, "No business is immune to the financial strain being caused by COVID-19 pandemic. Therefore, just as many of us in the private sector have had to take unnecessary measures to cutting costs and having the right sized companies reduce expenses due to the revenue loss, tax relief is critical component to our balance sheet, and I am glad to see that you are giving some consideration to tax relief for small businesses. Again, I would, I would ask that you prioritize those businesses. They're also most critical for our local economy and those business in trade."
The next one is from Armando Cisneros. He is referencing public comments, public hearings one and two, and also item twenty-six. The comment states, "Good afternoon, Mayor, city council and staff. For the record, my name is Armando Cisneros. It is, it is of extreme importance that the lines of communication between the public and their elected officials remain clear and strong. However, the difficulties, the technical difficulties which arose at the last meeting will not occur again." Sorry, hopefully the technical difficulties which arose at the last meeting will not occur again. I wanted to suggest that it may be a good idea for the city to have one person charged with communicating with the public during the crises instead of several. Please allow us more than five hundred characters on here. Thank you. We have another item from Mr. Henry Solvini. Uh, public comment. He is against item twenty-five. The comment states, "In light of the pandemic, the city of Laredo has taken unprecedented actions abridging activity, measures that work only when and if citizens trust the local government." Trust. In less than a week, the city council will take action on the bulkhead without community outreach and input. Trust. No community participation for a erroneous project that will shape our future prosperity. Surely, our newly hired city manager and economic development director prefer public participation. This does not pass the smell test. Postpone the item until we virtually meet."
Just for the benefit of the, the public that just joined us, that item twenty-five on the bulkhead has been tabled.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We have another public comment from Mr. Carlos Flores, representing the Community and No Border Wall Coalition. Also for item twenty-five. He is against it. He says, "Table this item taking up the issue is that at this moment of crises, when over one hundred Laredons have tested positive for the vi- for the virus, and six people have died from the disease, is irresponsible and unforgivable." Another item, I mean, another comment from Ms. Melissa Cigarroa, representing the Rio Grande International Study Center. Also on item twenty-five. She is against it. She says, "The proposed MOU holds much risk for the city. The MOU proposes major construction before environmental studies and engineering designs are completed and vetted. Flooding to Nova Laredo greatly increases with the construction plan. Construction along the riverbank will negatively impact the health of the river, the source of drinking water for people living along the river, and lack of transparency and fair process will speak poorly of council decision making. As written, this MOU should be voted down, or at least tabled." All right, we have another, um, public comment from Mr. J.J. Centeno, representing Blanca Estela Rodriguez from Teua Consulting LLC. It is on item seven. And the comment states, "J.J. Centeno from Teua Consulting LLC slash Oscar Castillo, engineer of record. Here to state, we are for this item." And it goes on to say, "Should you have any questions, please call 956-433-2205." Number seven.
This is in reference to item number seven.
That is correct, Mayor.
And I'd say, thank you.
Um, this is another comment from Mr. Armando Cisneros. Item number sixty, general council items and discussions. The comment states, "Hopefully this crisis will be over sooner rather than later. Hopefully, once things start to open up again, the city will continue to keep certain mandates in place. For example,
Mayor, what, whether are we listening to our public comments now, or those that are referencing specific items? So we won't forget. Should we just hold on to them to be addressed at that time?
Well, just Okay, yes. Yeah, let's, let's, yeah, keep on and and then just make a rotation to each, each one of us, uh, that we can bring them up, uh, if, if, then when the item comes up. Thank you.
For example, masks and gloves can be continued mandatory for all food service employees who directly handle food consumed by the public. Please do not be in such a hurry to open things up again that safety measures are put in jeopardy. Thank you. Also, Mr. J.J. Centeno, representing Roger Gubser. Gubser, this is all on item number eight. The comment says, JJ, same thing, J.J. Centeno and Teua Consulting LLC slash Oscar Castillo, engineer of record. Here to state that we are for this item, and then it goes on to say, "If we have any questions, contact their number." There's the last one, also from Mr. J.J. Centeno, representing Elvira H. Moreno, also from Teua Consulting LLC. This is on item number five. The comment states, "J.J. Centeno from Teua Consulting LLC, Oscar Castillo, engineer of record. Here to state that we are for this item. If you have any questions, they provide their number."
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to be called by the gentleman. Moving on. Motion to approve. Don't move. Okay. Okay, it was moved by Dr. Martha Martinez and seconded by, uh, Councilmember Mark Martinez. And, uh, by show of hands, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. I carry unanimously. Thank you. Uh, moving on to item two. Motion to approve item two.
I was asking, did you unmute?
Yes, sir, I'm unmuted right now. Okay, there's a motion of that from Martha Martinez to, uh, to approve, uh, the appointment of the key Laredo beautiful board of directors. And seconded, I will by Councilmember Mark Martinez. And, uh, discussion, yes, go ahead.
Uh, real quick on discussion, what was the criteria used to, uh, make these positions? And from which areas were applications accepted? Just want to make sure that all the areas of Laredo have representation in this one.
Are you unmuted?
I'm unmuted.
I'm muted?
Yeah, no, 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 I'm off mute.
Oh, exactly. The question is, uh, the process, uh, and for for the selection of the people, uh, in a study here, which is city manager?
I'm getting John Porter.
Yeah, Councilman?
Yes, sir. We can have, uh, Mr. Porter, uh, he's on, and we got him to unmute. And speak to the person that didn't unmute. If you can, bring him in. Mr. Porter, we're two, please join us.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, these, these were just people that were interested in, uh, the program. They volunteered their time. And, um, so we, we didn't have an application process, but it was through people that had worked with the program before and had shown interest in, in the program.
Uh, yes, and how is your outreach still in the all the areas of Laredo, uh, Mr. Porter?
Um,
So, so we try and do projects in every council district. Uh, that's a priority for the, the, uh, program, and so we, we have, uh, outreach in all, all of the different districts.
So for, in, in my issue, applying to a board, you have a lot of people that are willing to apply and willing to volunteer. The problem is, uh, the outreach is not there. And a specific process or protocol for people to allow and have the same opportunity to participate, I don't see it. So I do have a problem with this one at the current moment. I would have to oppose it. Not because of the people, because I really don't know the people that are here. I don't have a background or a resume of their issues. So I would really like to reconsider and do a proper procedure or application process for these types of committees.
Can we, uh, thank you so much, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez. Uh, Councilmember Rudy Gonzalez is now asking to be heard. Go ahead, sir.
From different areas. A question to me would, to, to you, for me would be, are you able to acquire or add more recipients to that list? Or is that list as far as it can go? Is that as many as we can have?
Uh, Councilmember, no, we, we can always add to this list.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. I appreciate it. Thank you.
In that case, if you can always add, and it won't be a issue, then I don't have a problem. Uh, would definitely allow the possible to move forward. But as long as, like you say, you have that capability, if somebody applies, you say, what this person thinks and something good to the table of, or the committee, let's allow him to come in. But for the future, these have a protocol in place where people are able to apply and have their resumes read. Because we are going to get the calls that, "How can I get in the committee?" What was in it? Put out there for the public to apply or enter the resume. We do have a lot of activists. But, uh, the means of communication or the PR sometimes is lacking on that area.
Depending, you're satisfied, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez, any other point of clarification? And if not called for the question, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Uh, and again, I show And again, I show of hands, I'm sorry. You others in favor, by show of hands? And it's unanimous, and I see also the screen, it's unanimous. You're none opposed, and motion carries? And moving on to public hearings. Is there a motion that we as presented and seconded, presented by Dr. Martha Martinez and seconded by Councilmember Mark Martinez? And which read the item, please, and which was study secretary?
Yes, sir. Public hearing number one is a public hearing, providing community residents an opportunity to comment under housing and community needs and the project service to see funded. Comments received will be made part of the city's twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one year, one-year action plan and the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four five-year consolidated plan. With the outline, all funding is, all funding will be provided listed below. Data available to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development will be utilized, allocation announced or as follows. Twenty-six act two-year community development block grant, three million, eight hundred, fifty, one hundred eighty dollars. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one home investment partnership grant, one million, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred fifty-eight dollars. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one emergency solutions grant, three hundred twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twelve. The public may provide comments via the public hearing or attending any public meeting location, the board is serving or calling our office at nine five six seven five five twenty-six seventy-five
Zoning of A G Agricultural District. Public hearing number ten is a public hearing and introductory ordinance altering and extending the boundaries limits of the city of Laredo. Annexing additional territory of one hundred acres more or less located in north of Vidal Cantu Road. And west of F M fourteen seventy two Mines World providing for an effective date. Of the ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract adopting the service plan. For annex territory and for the annex territory and establish initial zoning of M one. Public hearing number eleven is a public hearing and introductory ordinance. Altering and extending the boundary limits of the city of Laredo by annexing additional territory. Of fifteen point sixty three acres more or less located in north of Vidal Cantu Road and west of F M fourteen. Seventy two Mines World providing for an effective date of the ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute. The contract adopting a service plan for the annex territory and establishing initial zoning of M one. Public hearing number twelve is a public hearing introductory ordinance altering and extending the boundary limits. The city of Laredo by annexing additional territory of five point two zero seven seven acres more or less. Located north of Vidal Cantu Road and west of F M fourteen seventy two Mines Road. Providing for an effective date of the ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract adopting a service plan. For the annex territory and establishing an initial zoning of M one. Public hearing number thirteen is a public hearing and introductory ordinance altering and extending the boundary li- limits of the city of Laredo by annexing. Additional territory of two hundred and four point seven zero zero three acres. More or less located north of Vidal Cantu Road and west of F M fourteen seventy two Mines Road providing for an effective date. Of the ordinance and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract adopting the service plan for the annex territory. And establishing an initial zoning of M one. These are public hearings.
There are public hearings uh through thirteen and I know a council member uh all get had a question on. Public hearing number six, anyone wish uh to oppose or or. If I'm being favored, please uh please uh make your uh the objections or favorable comments and non plus as well. You have council member all good?
Yeah, just trying to see a map as it relates to six um. Public hearing number six, I'm just trying to get a visual of that.
Mayor uh. We're just right now uh Mister Simon is displaying the the blue map and to speak to the different tracks, so I know Mister Simon has shared his view. But if the councilor has any specifics uh he's on uh to address him too.
Thank, thank you sir. And okay, so I'm looking this, so this tract. Nine and eight. Is within. Is that east or west of fourteen seventy two?
So I was just lying there a bit. So track six is south of fourteen seventy two, is that your question?
Uh okay, yeah, and is that is that adjacent to um the uh Vidal Cantu? Road, is that what that is?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and what's the the intended use is for um additional warehousing?
That's correct.
Okay, alright, so that's number six, and then if we could um. Jump up to public hearing and intro- introductory ordinance number five, can you identify? Let me see five on that.
That's annexation track one, which is right here, south of thirteen seventy two.
Got it. La Paz's week, which annexation tract is that?
You're referring to which public hearing?
Uh number seven, I'm sorry.
That's track three. It's right here.
Okay, I see it, alright, gotcha. Seven, six, eight, nine, two, okay, those are all my questions, thank you. Uh motion to um close and introduce.
It was a motion and then.
Uh as to.
The question is a motion to uh to uh introduce all of them. Is that correct, that council member all good?
Yes, sir.
And seconded by uh council member Doctor Marta Martinez. Uh others in favor, show your hands, please. Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries, motion carries unanimously, thank you. And again, this is a public hearing and we haven't heard any uh objections or favorable comments from the public. Of course, you can tell.
Also to introduce fourteen through sixteen. And motion to approve final rating of ordinances seventeen and eighteen.
Well stated uh uh fourteen fourteen and and the uh sixteen isn't? Yeah, just introduced by council. Okay, there's a question by a council member uh Gonzalez, is it? Mark Martinez on uh sixteen, go ahead, please.
Okay, uh item number sixteen is an ordinance of the city of Laredo, Texas, many chapter seven building and building regulations, article two section seven dash twenty four. Of the code of ordinances to provide for additional authority that the building development services director may exercise to temporarily revoke. An applicant's permit, license, endorsement, or registration privileges, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative. Providing a severability clause, providing for publication, and declaring an effective date, I just wanted to know why.
Councilman and uh mayor and councilor.
There's already an ordinance right now that that speaks to this, that if somebody doesn't provide information uh for their permit or if somebody provides false information. That we can revoke their ability to to work, but this is something the building department asked me to bring back because it hasn't been utilized. So because of some problems, they just wanted to bring it back, and I don't know if the building director wants to.
Yes, I want to hear Christina, um the the item came to light, the councilman, we've had a. No, can I hear you?
That said, if if a contractor or somebody who was applying to work in the city didn't provide adequate information or false information. Then we could revoke their ability to to um work for like a a specific first time, whether it's six months or a year. And the building department asked me to bring it back, so we just bring it to council's attention because it hasn't been used in the past. It hasn't been utilized by the department.
From my understanding is this already exists?
Yes.
We're just reintroducing it?
We just think um the department just wanted to bring it back so that we could just, I guess, um bring it to the council's attention because it hadn't been used. Just I guess for the public's reason because to kind of put the contractors on notice.
It's a it's an ordinance, it's an effect now. So just a reminder, so it's a reminder?
Yes, I mean, yes, and I think he might have added if he's on the line.
That was my question to to him, so is did he did he add anything to this ordinance?
I'm gonna let him speak on on.
Hello, uh yes, this is our authority of Seattle beating now. Uh the the item is being brought to you uh back uh because uh we've had issues with repeat offenders. And the issue of the the method of operation as far as uh when they're cited, we don't have the ability to stop um contract offenders. That are not paying permits etcetera, one of the issues um that that is being added to to the um current ordinance is um and it's um. I'm just reading um being it, it's it relates to an issue on a stopper quarter or a citation. So basically being able to stop the contractor for uh until he either repairs or does the right thing. Um many, many times they don't go to the quarter, the hearing is takes too long, so. And in looking at it uh in my short term over here, I recognize that this ordinance was in place since two thousand seventeen. But we haven't implemented it uh into its full effect, so that is going to be another challenges that I have to try to. Make sure and bring other contractors to be registered and follow the rules.
Who are council member Gonzalez? But it's already been in effect since twenty seventeen, then it's just up to you guys in your department to enforce it. I I don't think there should be any, you know, I mean, I don't think it should have been brought to us, if it's already there, then it's there, I mean, it's there for a reason, of course.
I do recall that one thing is he was mentioned was the stop orders, even though right now I think they they do play stop orders, there's no authority for them in our ordinance. And so that kind of gives them that authority they needed to actually stop.
Yeah, the council member, do you guys have a comment or a question, go ahead, sir?
Uh based on what you're hearing from councilman Gonzalez and myself, that this is uh. If there is already an order and we really don't have any information on what's going on, what's going to be the process of stopping or executing uh. Uh the process of how do you apply to a certain contractor, not to a certain con- uh to other contractors without even having having policies and procedures in place? I'd like to motion this table, uh I'd like to motion to table this item with next conference meeting, so we can get proper information of what's going on.
Okay, there's a motion to the table at sixteen and seconded by council, council member Rudy Gonzalez. Uh that was a favorite say I, I showed her hand. Okay, comment? I think correct, so those are papers say that, show your hands. You any opposed? None opposed, the the motion to table carries, thank you.
And there was standing, um there was standing motion for the approval of final rating of board sizes seventeen and eighteen.
And I had seconded. Okay, so the motion was to continue with seventeen, the the motion to to approve?
Okay.
Okay, so that's that's been voted out.
Motion to, motion to approve consent items nineteen, twenty, uh nineteen and twenty, I have a question on twenty one. Okay, motion to approve item nineteen.
Okay, there's a motion to approve uh item nineteen and seconded by council member Martinez, uh Mark Martinez discussion. Not heard, it was a favorite say I, but show your hands. Uh you any opposed? None opposed, but showing hands, so motion carries unanimously, thank you, we're in item twenty now, go ahead. When it comes.
I see a huge disparity here, uh motion twenty, so so we can read it out loud, is authorizing the city manager to execute the toll collection system. Maintenance service contract between the city of Laredo and Transcore LP. For the hardware and software maintenance of the Laredo Bridge Systems electronic toll collection equipment. This maintenance service contract is for a term of three years, subject to future budget appropriations. Effective April first twenty twenty for an annual amount of three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and thirty one. And a total not to exceed nine hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and ninety three, and the funding is available in the bridge system fund. Why the big disparity between those two figures?
Hello, councilmember, honorable mayor, any more?
It's a multiple.
Oh, it's three twenty every single year.
And there's a, any clarification and accept for the uh and there's a motion. Uh is there a motion? There's a motion to approve by council member Torres and and seconded by Gonzalez, uh discussion. Not heard, those are papers say I, by show of hands. Any opposed, by show of hands, uh the eyes have it in favor, uh thank you, and it carries, thank you.
Mayor, for for item twenty one, that is a tax abatement to the district I represent, I just like to know um. And never mind, um motion to approve item twenty one.
There was a motion to approve item twenty one by council member Torres, seconded by council member Gonzalez, discussion by show of hands. And and uh was it favored by show of hands? Any opposed, uh by show of hands, uh and and none opposed, uh the motion carries, yes.
Motion to approve items twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four, along with twenty six through thirty one.
Second.
With the exception of twenty eight, requested by council member Mercure Martinez.
Uh I might just uh. So we have a motion that council member Torres for twenty two, twenty three, twenty four, twenty five has been tabled, so that's.
But that didn't include twenty five, all the way to thirty one, with the exception of twenty eight for discussion as requested by council member Mercure Martinez.
Okay, as as stated, and it's been seconded and seconded by Dr. by Dr. Martha Martinez, discussion.
For discussion, we're voting on the rest.
Okay, so twenty eight is that on on on.
Okay, yeah, we're approving them all except twenty eight, so we can open it up for discussion.
Okay, so all those in favor, uh say aye, by show of hands. Uh any opposed, by show of hands, and seeing the eyes have it, we're in favor, the motion carries, okay, twenty eight.
Oh, I remember twenty eight.
Or make it to open up. Yes, there's a question also by council, just the member Bali, uh yes, go ahead, sir. Which one is it? Member Bali and then they have council member Martinez, Martinez.
Okay, uh yeah, yeah, mayor, uh as to as to this item, um we've been working for a while on this project, this the Southern Hotel. And um I've been working with community development on it, it's it's obviously in downtown. Um the the amount of the services for the architectural seem to me to be high. And I don't know if council member Martinez nodding, he I think he has the same concern uh about the amount. I'd like to hear from from staff as to um as to this item, mayor, why, why, why? Uh why, why it's so high, and whether or not we need to either renegotiate this. Or to open it up to other architects depending on where we're at in the process, can I hear from from uh management? Uh or community development management, tell me who who you'd like us to hear from?
We've heard the inquiry from my council member Bali, management, uh do we have a response, go ahead. Yes, sir, we've got uh Miss Tina Martinez on, she can speak to the item, go ahead, Tina.
Uh yes, good, good afternoon, this is Tina Martinez, a community development director. Um the reason um the amount for the contract is um five twenty six is that we, this is not just an. Archi- um architect and and engineering contract, it's also going to be a consulting contract that. They will help us put together a section one rate loan, the section one rate loan is is um is a loan package that. With our uh three million dollars that we get from C D B G funds, we are allowed to um borrow up to. Um you know, five times our allocation, but with that being said, we have been working with this property downtown that we know. Is gonna require a lot of, you know, feasibility study, a performer, some financials, and not just. And and overall, an assessment of of this project, so we did break it down to tasks and we happened um in connection. Communication with our engineering department and also with um the consultant. And we do feel that this is a fair price for all the services that we are requesting of the of the firm. Any any other questions, or I can be a little bit more specific on some?
Uh um mayor, yes, uh so as I understand it, I think you were pretty clear that that it is not just for the architect. Architectural services, it's a total professional services contract for engineering as well as for actually. Um um the the process of the of the loan, for actually consulting on the on the section eight loan, and that's why the amount is high.
Yes, correct, there's could it be some some additional uh assessments, some additional um financials. Uh and overall, an application that will be assisted through these um through this consulting work. We have already been talking to this section one rate office, the HUD office, and actually our our um. We even had like a a conversation with a consultant, and so they can really understand what is it that we're asking for. And together with our HUD office and and because it's gonna be straight to HUD Washington, not just through our field office.
Okay, a- a- and all also all of this comes through through HUD monies, which are available to us?
Yes, so right now we have twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen money that was set aside for a rental project in the downtown area. Uh we haven't had any nonprofits or any other, you know, viable project, so we decided um with with talks to management and 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 um. And council, we did decide that the Southern Hotel would be a great uh opportunity. Actually, HUD office, the Washington office was very excited when I showed them the the sketches and stuff. But um altogether, you know, it is gonna be uh a very big project and a lot of paperwork, a lot of uh, you know. Documentation that's gonna be having to be submitted.
Okay, well, well, I I appreciate your 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 hard work on this and and um at at this time, mayor, I move to uh approve item. Twenty eight as as is.
Okay, we've we've heard uh. In motion twenty eight for approval, and there's a seconded by Doctor Martha Martinez, a discussion, yes, go ahead, please.
Uh first of all, I'd like to commend uh councilman Bali for uh being at the forefront of this project, I think it's a very worthwhile project. Uh but I do have this question, how many units are we talking about for this uh Southern Hotel?
That that is gonna be part of our uh uh assessment po- uh phase, and um we we have rough numbers in our head. Um you know, gathering from the square footage that we were able to almost complete the convent project that is kitty corner or around the corner from that project. But we don't have a numbered yet, because that's really gonna be up to the consultants to be able to assist us in putting that performance, those financials together. And see what's gonna be available at the end, um C D B G funds do require us to have fifty one percent available to low income. So that number, that fifty one percent of units is really what's gonna trigger how many units I end up doing. So that the uh the rental income can be a sustainable project.
But you don't know if it's eight units, twelve units, thirty two units, forty units?
I mean, a rough estimate right now, based on the square footage that I see on the convent property, um that is a very similar um um square footage. Uh that's a two story, this is a three story, so over there we were able to really jam pack fifteen um studio sized apartments. So I would say, um just depending on the sizes that we might be able to go to. Uh it's really hard to tell right now, but um I mean, we could possibly get more than fifteen units, it just depends what size and what. What um how big of a unit we want them.
Um any other discussion? I just do, I just uh like like you pointed out, uh councilman Bali, um. I just talked to five hundred and twenty six thousand, eight hundred and nineteen, it was a bit exorbitant for. For being that size, we're talking in excess of over twelve thousand dollars a unit. Uh based on architectural engineering and.
Okay, any other uh point to be brought up under discussion?
May I be recognized?
Yes, go ahead, councilman, Mayor Protem, I'm sorry, Torres.
I think that we've all actually discussed this similarly with other downtown um buildings, and yes, you know, the question always comes up. On the actual cost for architectural fees, especially for these type of buildings, but I think that what also needs to be taken into consideration. Is the uh restoration of it's, we can't compare this as new construction, but rather. The actual restoration of the buildings, and I think that that's what we keep on hearing from council member Bali. And and staff, how that in itself plays um a role in the expense of the design or the architectural assessment of these. Buildings that are potentially historical or have some sort of value to our downtown community, and it's that higher cost we end up paying for. Um investing in these buildings that we have to maintain and now find, I guess, a different use for for our city, so. I think that that has been the constant um response we continue to get from community development and the answer we we get for. These old buildings that we're investing into converting for affordable housing, so. For that reason, I'll be supporting it, um but just for clarification, I believe that that's always what we've been told, and I believe that that is. Um consistent to what the community development director has informed us throughout.
May, mayor, call for the question? Yes, there's a call for the question, all those in favor, say aye, by show of hands.
Aye.
Any opposed, uh by show of hands? None seen, uh uh motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Second.
Okay, there's there's a motion to bring back uh twenty nine and and seconded.
I'm sorry, mayor, bring it back, item twenty nine, sir.
Twenty nine, and I seconded by mayor Protem.
So the side on.
No, hold on, yeah, we need a wrong, a discussion? All those in favor say aye, by uh show of hands, you opposed, by show of hands, none seen, uh motion carries, go ahead, sir.
This one, sir, uh if I can, uh I was gonna talk to staff about this one, because I want to revise some stuff, I might wanna add and and. And subtract some stuff from this project, so we might have to revisit this one. For for now, I'm gonna, I wanna table it and come back, so I can discuss with staff what I wanna do uh pertaining to this item, please. And I believe this is uh uh the construction, uh the the roof construction, I say it's structure at uh. Lassa Park, which is over there by Silito, is it correct?
Okay, okay, so your motion is to table, the motion is to table, please, so that I can revise uh so the project and speak with staff. There's a motion is presented, seconded by whom?
Second.
Uh council discussion, uh discussion, uh is the motion to table or you also?
Uh sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, man, I take I take that back, my my motion was not to table, my motion was.
To deny.
To deny, because I need to revise some stuff with. Yeah.
To deny and 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 bring back.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so seconded the same way, uh council member? Okay, and seconded, and the person's question, I heard, I was, they were saying that by, that shows hands. Any opposed, by show of hands, none seen, the motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Uh item thirty two, I'd like um to ask management um or finance. Um just to clarify, the the hundred thousand, uh four hundred sixty five dollars and ten cents to thermal Fisher for covid testing. Kits is not um in connection to the fraudulent testing kits, correct, Mr. City Manager?
Uh test kits are done, uh in the past, these are entirely different testing kits.
Mayor, without clarification, I'd like to make a motion to approve item thirty two.
Discussion?
Discussion, I'd like to discuss this.
Yeah, so uh may I be heard? So first, um I I I appreciate looking at this and and having an idea of of how many kits we're gonna um. Actually purchase, I I do think that this is a living sort of document, I don't think this is gonna be all written, so I think it probably needs to be aware that. If things come out, we're going to have to move, especially because we're um not quite sure uh how uh how much of this equipment we're going to need. So I don't think this is all that we spent on this, I just think this is the first reporting of it. Uh and and I just wanna recommit to to management that that they have to act accordingly. Uh to what they see, and they have to react accordingly to what they see, and so they have to be ready to anticipate. Um uh any purchases that they need to make, um not not to fuel the drives to do it, when the council must have get exponentially more expensive. So I wanted to say.
Mayor?
Okay, any other uh discussion?
How many approximately, how many testing kits are we purchasing? That uh are we purchasing with the let amount of money or?
Uh, I want you to jump in here, give us one guy, we'll be especially on the testing kit, uh, please.
Uh, members of city council, you have this one for the record. So as far as the thermal fissure uh setup, we did buy a thousand kits, but this includes the whole setup, of course, the uh the kits, some of the uh the swabs, the medium that's used, uh, pretty much the whole setup, including a machine to help test the um the the actual uh um samples.
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, can you hear me, this is Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Mayor, city council director, you're health department, um, yeah, the thermal fissure, first of all, is not the rapid, this is PCR. And we have all the equipment, we have the reagents, we're just waiting for one last piece so we can do our quality control. But this is not the rapid. Uh, and I appreciate that we can have some flexibility as well, uh, because uh this may change or not, so as soon as we have this capacity, uh, we can start testing here in addition to the support that we have to send out to the state. Uh, but again, just wanted to clarify that this is not the rapid test.
And if I may real quick again, uh, if I may, mayor, real quick again, on estimate, how many tests are we approximately going? Because I didn't have that question answered, or I couldn't hear.
One thousand have been ordered, and we have one thousand tests.
All right.
And uh these, we can get reverse, the city can get reverse that if I present, repeating?
Yes.
And that's that's, remember?
That happened, that was a good little question, mayor, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And and just to clarify, this does include the PCR machine? Uh, whoever can answer that?
Yes, mayor, it does include the PCR.
Okay, thank you very much, uh, yeah, do we, do we have any other discussion? Yeah, call for, call for the question, all those in favor, say aye, by show hands? Any opposed, none seen, motion carries unanimously, thank you, uh, next item?
To approve items thirty-three through forty.
Okay, there's a motion to approve items thirty-three through forty, seconded by made by, yeah, Mayor Pro Tem, and and seconded by uh Martha Martinez, Matt, uh, before the discussion, go ahead.
We will hold forty, so we can talk about that.
Um, with the exception of uh forty, as requested by councilmember Dr. Martha Martinez.
Okay, uh, with the exception of forty, as as amended, both way, or at least by the the first motion with the second. Uh, call for the question, all those in favor say aye, by show hands? Any opposed by show hands? None, motion carries unanimously. Yes, item forty?
Yes, um, to this director, um, the question is Quest Diagnostics, uh, at least the primary care doctors are telling me about fourteen days behind in their uh return of information as far as testing results. And so um, this is not anything COVID-related, like this is just for employee uh wellness and health and all that, right? So this, just to clarify, this has nothing to do with normal testing, uh, uh, sorry, COVID testing, this is just for normal appropriations uh for our our lab services there in the department.
Mayor, um, councilman Dr. Martha Martinez and uh councilmembers, correct, this is for our regular primary care services. And yes, you're right, Quest is one of the primary uh labs who also is doing COVID for California, so that's why, yes, they have a a very late turnaround, but this is for our regular primary care prevention and women's health services.
Thank you, sir, motion to approve for item thirty?
There's a motion to approve by uh Dr. Martha Martinez, seconded by councilmember uh Martha Martinez, discussion? And heard, motion carries by show hands? Uh, any opposed by show hands, and none seen, and yeah, the motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Motion to approve forty-one and forty-two?
Okay. Uh, mayor, should we bring in forty-one?
I think we've already appointed our city manager, therefore we should approve the appointment, the negotiations of the contract, I think, would be separate.
I'll second that, please, forty-one, forty-two. Okay, there's a motion, as presented by Mayor Pro Tem on on forty-one and forty-two, and seconded by Dr. Martha Martinez, uh, and the discussion? And heard, uh, all those in favor by show hands? Any opposed by show hands? None seen, motion carries unanimously, thank you. And next item is thirty-three?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion to approve uh item forty-three and seconded by uh Martha Martinez, uh, councilmember Martha Martinez, discussion? All those in favor by show hands? Any opposed, uh, none seen, uh, motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Motion to approve items forty-four through fifty-one.
There's a motion as presented by Mayor Pro Tem, forty-four to fifty-one, seconded by uh councilmember Rudy Gonzalez, discussion? None heard? All those in favor by show sign, but yeah, show hands, uh? Any opposed by show hands, uh? Motion carries unanimously? Thank you.
Motion to approve item fifty-two, the internal auditor has nothing need to report, and if she could acknowledge that, mayor?
Yes, there's a motion to approve, subject to the uh internal auditor, and please, uh.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council, um, this is Veronica Baisa with internal audit, uh, nothing new to report right now.
Thank you very much, uh, so there's a motion, and seconded by uh, councilmember Martha Martinez. Uh, and that being so, then a discussion, none heard, all those in favor say by show hands? Any opposed? None seen, the motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Items fifty-five through fifty-eight?
Okay, there's a motion by Mayor Pro Tem to bring up fifty-five and fifty-eight.
All the way through fifty-eight.
Oh, okay, fifty-five through fifty, and how about fifty-three?
No, there's an executive session.
Oh, okay.
Fifty-three, there's nothing on the hour at all.
Okay, there's a motion uh to bring up items fifty-five through fifty-eight under executive session, uh, and then?
Well, well, as a point of order, I think we voted on bringing them up, and then we voted to go into executive session, right? It's just to vote to bring them up?
Okay, yeah, so fifty-five to fifty-eight, just to bring them up, uh, for discussion, and the seconded by uh um, councilmember Gonzalez, Rudy Gonzalez, a discussion? And heard, all those in favor by show hands, uh? Any opposed, none seen, motion carries unanimously, items fifty-five to fifty-eight.
Motion to go into executive session for items fifty-five through fifty-eight pursuant to corresponding sections five five one point zero seven four, five five one point zero seven one A, five five one point zero seven.